Good evening, the Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for July 10, 2017 will please come to order, and Ms. Keen, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cohen, absent. Ms. Keen, here. Ms. Johansson?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Ms. Lucky?
Here.
Ms. Palzine?
Here.
Dr. Anderson?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Keen. So, our first order of business tonight is to approve the agenda and consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a community member so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. So, the consent agenda items are listed in the board materials, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any discussion? All right, and if we could please take a roll.
Ms. Johansson?
Yes.
Ms. Lucky?
Yes.
Ms. Palzine?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Keen, yes? Ms. Cohen is absent. Chair McCullough?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right, thank you, we have an agenda. All right, our next item on the agenda is usually reports from organizations, but I don't know that we have any this evening. So, we will move to our next item, which is recognitions, which is certainly one of our highlights as a school board. So, Dr. Anderson, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome, everybody. My name is Chase Anderson, I'm the superintendent for the school district, and it's always my privilege to be able to convene the recognitions portion of the meeting. So, we'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight on this beautiful July evening here in Minnesota. We know you would have had plenty of options tonight of places to be, but we're glad that you're here to celebrate with us and spend a little bit of time here this evening. I'm going to start out tonight with our recognitions for those who have announced their retirement since our last meeting. And we have two this month, and they are Patricia Raymond, high school paraprofessional who worked with the school district for eighteen years, and Patty Pinata, Oakwood teacher for twelve years. And neither of these folks were able to be with us tonight, but I'm sure they're tuned in on live television and enjoying hearing their name read over television as I speak. But at this time, I'd like to invite those who are here to join me in a round of applause for these two individuals. And our next recognition this evening is for the National High School Strength and Conditioning Coach of the Year, and I would like to invite Ryan Johnson to please come forward at this time. Ryan, congratulations. I'll share a few comments on behalf of Ryan, and then give him a chance to share some thoughts and add on to whatever I may have missed about this wonderful honor. Congratulations to Ryan Johnson for being named the 2017 High School Strength and Conditioning Coach by the National Strength and Conditioning Association. Ryan becomes the twenty-sixth recipient of the award, which has been handed out since 1991. Award winners are selected by a volunteer committee, the NSCA's Coaching Task Force, who determine the winner based on their contributions to the NSCA, their community, and the strength in conditioning profession. Ryan teaches physical education at Wayzata High School and is the Strength and Conditioning Coordinator for Wayzata Public Schools, a position he began in the year 2000. Wayzata athletics have captured fifty-four team state titles in his tenure, and Ryan works directly with the three-time state champion football program as Director of Operations and Player Development. He is a member of the National Strength and Conditioning Association and is the Minnesota NSCA State Director. In 2010, he was named the NSCA Minnesota High School Strength and Conditioning Professional of the Year. In 2013, he was named the NSCA State Director of the Year. A former volunteer firefighter, he also received an award of merit from the Minnesota Department of Health and Safety for participation in a life-saving CPR AED effort to revive a player that suffered sudden cardiac arrest while at practice. Ryan is a frequent clinician, speaker, and his Wayzata Trojan Power Program has been visited by over fifty other high schools and small college programs. He also volunteered his time in the Rockford School District, where he and his wife and four children reside, by serving as the Rockford Area Athletic Association President and Youth Football Director. "Congratulations to Coach Johnson for this well-deserved award," said Scott Caulfield, NSCA Head Strength and Conditioning Coach. "He has changed many lives and exemplifies what it is to be an NSCA professional. We're proud to have him as a member." Ryan will receive his award at the Fortieth Annual NSCA National Conference, which will be held in Las Vegas from July 12 through the 15th. You have your bags packed? All right, that's good, around the corner. So, at this time, I'll invite Ryan to share a few thoughts and words about his work and this honor. Ryan, congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks very much, I'm not used to a microphone or people wearing dress clothes. Most of us are in T-shirts and shorts all the time, there's a couple of the guys over here that have been around through our program. I'm very honored to receive this award, but I really want to extend my thanks with the professional development that's been, you know, at my discretion to use to be able to go out. The first conference I attended, I didn't know a single person at it. I was in Indianapolis, you know, I just, you know, begged and got the money to go, didn't know a single person there, got involved, and having those opportunities and experiences, became a state director, got to meet a lot of other coaches and professionals along the way, and being able to attend these functions and better myself as a teacher and a coach, that goes right back to the kids, and then being able to hang around in an organization and get recognized like this, it's a tremendous honor. So, I thank, you know, Wayzata Public Schools. Jamie Sherwood, our athletic director, has been a huge advocate of our program, and if you've kind of seen in the world of strength and conditioning, we've got a pretty nice weight room, and we thank everybody for that, and that helps out a lot. So, very appreciative and glad to be here, and thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
And our next recognition this evening is for our 2017 state championship, state champion, boys golf team. And I'm not sure if they were officially the fifty-fourth team under Coach Johnson's weight room tenure, or if this is the fifty-fifth.
They were.
All right, they were, I figured they probably were, or close to it. So, at this time, I'd like to invite all those who are here, coaches and players, to come forward and be recognized at this time. I'll read a few words about the team, and then give Coach and the players an opportunity to share a few thoughts that they'd like. So, congratulations. Congratulations to the Wayzata Boys Golf Team for winning the 2017 state championship at Bunker Hills in Coon Rapids in June with the two-stroke victory. The team finished with a two-round score of 591, just two strokes better than the second-place team, which actually led Wayzata by four strokes going into the final round. Led by coaches Alan Christopherson and Johannan, team members include senior Ian McKenzie-Olsen, sophomore Ben Schumacher, senior Ben Frazini, junior Tristan Melko, senior Van Holmgren, and senior Peter Larson. It's the team's seventh championship, most recently being named the 2015 Class 3A Champions. Wayzata also captured team titles in 1994, 1998, and then three in a row from 2009 through 2011. Senior Van Holmgren was named the individual champion with a birdie and four consecutive pars to place as a medalist with a two-round score of 143. Very impressive, congratulations, Coach. I'll turn it over to you.
I'd like to thank the board, the teachers, staff members that have supported us. Golf is one of those sports where the kids are dismissed from school, as painful as it is, and the teachers have been incredible to work with in helping these kids stay caught up or get caught up. So, a huge thanks to them, to Jamie Sherwood, he's, you know, granted me some leeway on how we try to run things each year, but that's because each year we have different kids. And we need to cater our program to try to meet the needs that the players, or the strengths that the players are bringing to us each year. And we've been very fortunate over the last few years to have a core group of four seniors that are going to be leaving that were mentioned earlier. And there's, you know, some responsibility, but also, you know, a great opportunity for some of our younger golfers, Ben being one of them, to take from this experience of playing with these four seniors, because their leadership, their determination, their drive is basically what fueled our push back in 2015 for a state championship, and then now this year in 2017. But again, it's one of those programs where I think having a family, a golfing family, and the support that the parents have provided, the support that the players have shown each other, and that the community has given us, is what makes us strong in playing well year after year. So, thank you.
I'm kind of making this part up as we go, since our photographer isn't here. presentations, so the next item is superintendent reports and recommendations, and it looks like we have a number of them under finance and business, so, Mr. Westrum, should I turn it over to you?
Sure. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson, I'll, we have three items before you this evening. I'll go over the first item, and then we have a brief presentation that we'd like to share with the board. So, the first item is our monthly financial reports, and this is a standard report that we share with the board on a monthly basis. So, enclosed for your review and information are the following financial reports as of May 2017. The Student Activity Fund Report, the Investment Summary, an analysis of the financial reports, a statement of revenues, and a statement of expenditures. And as you probably are aware, the school district has a fiscal year that goes from July 1st through June 30th. So, we will begin, or our business office will begin, actually closing the books as of June 30th, so these are the last reports that you'll see related to that fiscal year until we have our auditors come out and get items wrapped up. Within the analysis that you see before you, all of our items are coming in reasonable and as expected. We do a reasonableness test comparing our expenditures as a percent of budget over the last several years, and everything is coming in as expected, so there should be minimal variations or variances from budget to actual. So, I'd be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westrum. Are there any questions for Mr. Westrum on monthly financial statements? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the next item, I think I'll invite Dr. Anderson to begin a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, that includes recommendations made by his executive directors and his strategic leadership team to present to the board. So, with that, and then I'll join Dr. Anderson as well.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, thank you for giving us an opportunity tonight to share information leading up to recommendation that we have in regard to some real significant, very important funding topics and issues for the school district. And the slides that I'm going to show hopefully will provide a bit of an outline for you. I know you've all been very deeply involved in conversations and discussions at work sessions and committees about this presentation, but we wanted to be sure that our public is well-versed and has the background and knowledge about the work that we've been focusing on over the last several months, which I suppose we could also say years, and always focusing on and tending to our financial needs of our school district and working collectively as a board and a staff to ensure that the quality of Wayzata Public Schools stays in good order, and we're able to move forward in a way that makes good sense for our community and delivers the education that our families have come to expect from us as an educational So, this evening, what you're going to be doing is reviewing and approving, our recommendation is for you to approve a referendum recommendation and the ballot questions that will go with that, and I'll share a little bit more information about that. And the second request or recommendation that we're making is that you move to direct us as the school administration to prepare and submit a review and comment document to MDE, or the Minnesota Department of Education. And this concept of a review and comment is a packet of information and a proposal to the Department of Education indicating needs in regard to space and accommodations for our students due to growth. As you're well aware, and I think our viewing public will have general awareness of, we've been undergoing significant student enrollment growth and increases in our citizen and resident population over the past several years. We've taken a number of actions during that timeframe to expand capacity and make modifications to our existing facilities in order to accommodate this growth. So, really, the overriding goal for this is to ensure that we maintain our academic excellence and that we continue to make good decisions and plan for our, this growing enrollment that I've just referenced. So, in response to this work that we've been doing, something that we value tremendously and feel very good about is that we have an incredibly supportive community for the Wayzata Public Schools. We so much appreciate the community engagement, the energy and pride that they bring forth in our public school system, and the support that they have continued to demonstrate and show for us over many, many years. In some recent survey work that was done, we were pleased to see that ninety-four percent of our residents rate the quality of our school district to be excellent or good. And ninety percent of these residents also believe that they get good value for their investment in our schools. So, over the course of time, the work that our staff and our school boards have done, working in cooperation with our community, have resulted in a product that our community is proud of and supportive of, and has been there for us on all occasions to help us continue to better our organization and to be able to move forward. The other thing that, fact that we're very proud of is that the school district is in high demand, and for anyone who may have recently driven, particularly in the northern parts of the school district, they would quickly see the rapid home development and new home building that's occurring, new developments opening regularly. And in the more established parts of our community, we're also experiencing and seeing some turnover of existing homes. Residents who have raised their children and now making different housing arrangements for their future, vacating their homes and young families moving in. So, we're seeing the growth not only in the northern part of the school district, but also in some of the southern parts as well. So, the funding needs really that are being presented to you tonight are in the form of three school funding requests targeted for the election date of November 7, 2017. And those three questions that are proposed for your decision-making this evening include question one, an operating levy. The school district, along with many school districts, and I think I could probably safely say most school districts in the state, have operating levies that provide additional revenues to the school district that fund the general operations for the school district. So, that in tandem with the state aid through the state funding formula that we receive really provides the great majority of the funding that allows us to deliver a high-quality program. So, this first question, and we'll get to a little more detail as we work through this, is to renew and increase the amount that the school district is currently receiving. And we'll, again, speak a little bit more in detail on that a couple slides down the way here. The second question is related to bond funding, and that gets back to this topic of enrollment or resident student growth that we're experiencing within the school district. We've continued to grow, and even though we just this year opened Metal Ridge Elementary School and are already making plans to soon break ground for an expansion to Metal Ridge Elementary School, the projected growth is continuing into a number of years forward into the future, and it's important for us to bring forth this recommendation to you to build another elementary school and to also do some additional work around the school district, which, again, I'll highlight a little more detail on in a little bit. And then the third question will be a renewal of an existing technology levy. By law, the operating levy and these technology levies can be placed or approved for time periods of no more than ten years. So, this particular levy that we're proposing, we bring back to the voters this fall, was approved in the fall of 2009 for a ten-year period, so we're quickly coming up on that ten-year timeframe. And you might recall back in 2014 when we approved the bond for the elementary school, the high school expansion, we had a second question on that ballot for one of our other technology levies, so that one was approved at that time for a ten-year period. So, this is that second one that was approved in '09 that is now coming up again for expiration date in the near future. With the operating levy, again, that is the question related to the levy authority that a school district can request voter approval from to bring additional resources to the school district. And essentially, for us, the renew and increase is really important for us to be able to stabilize our budget, maintain our current class sizes, manage our growing enrollment, and to provide students with needed support services, which would be in the form of counselors, social workers, and other student support personnel that help us ensure that we're not only meeting the academic needs of our students, but also the social, emotional needs and their academic and personal counseling needs. So, the importance of this particular levy is to help us achieve these four key objectives and to, again, maintain the quality of our programming and the school district's solid, strong reputation that continues to have and see new residents moving into our communities. Over the past several years, approximately, I think, eight years of history is shown here, as can be seen in each of the past eight fiscal years, when taking into account inflation and changes to funding formulas and mechanisms for the school district, in each one of those years, we've needed to make budgetary reductions in order to present the school board with a balanced budget by the statutory deadline of July 1st. So, cumulatively, over this eight-year period, approximately sixteen million dollars in cuts or budget modifications have needed to occur in order to bring forth that balanced budget and to ensure that we sustain the financial viability of the school district, which, as you'll be aware, has maintained a triple-A bond rating from the two major rating aid agencies, and that's something that we haven't taken lightly and know that that positions us well for funding and financing, and something that we certainly have wanted to maintain in good order with. But this is concerning, and although we've worked really hard during this timeframe to keep the direct impact away from the classroom as much as possible, with each successive year, that's becoming increasingly more challenging and difficult. And we haven't increased our operating levy since 2005. There have been some incremental increases with the inflationary factors that are built in, but we have not come to the voters to increase to the state-mandated cap for quite some time. So, it's our belief as an administration, and the recommendation that came to me as superintendent, and I'm forwarding on to you, is that it's time for us to seriously take a look at that and to look at that cap and bring that forward to the community. So, that will be the decision-making component before you here this evening. If we compare this operating levy with neighboring schools and other metro school districts, this graphic gives a bit of a picture of that. You can see the blue bar on the bar graph represents Wayzata, and the black bar represents the average of these, of the school districts represented here, and perhaps metro-wide, I'm not quite sure if that's the average of these districts or if it's a metro-wide average. But you can see where we're positioned, and the dollar amount that we're currently generating is about fifteen hundred dollars per pupil. The state-mandated cap is just slightly over two thousand dollars, so we're about five hundred dollars per pupil underneath of what the state has established as a reasonable cap that they have put in place for school districts to not exceed in coming forward to the voters with these operating levies to provide additional funding for the school district. So, we do have quite a lot of space to, of upward movement, if you will, on our ability to bring additional revenues into the school district to ensure that we're able to maintain the quality of educational programming that we've come to enjoy and expect in our community. With the question that we'll be presenting to you for your authority, authorization to move forward with, would include a operating levy, renew and increase, as I indicated before. And without doing this, we're envisioning, based on a couple of assumptions, that we would, could project annual budget reductions in the neighborhood of about a million dollars per year. That's based on an assumption of about three percent interest and projected two percent increase on the formula, which even with that, a two percent increase on the formula is not necessary. is not necessarily a guarantee. Over the last decade, the average over those years of an increase to the formula is somewhat less than that, probably somewhere between one and a half and two percent now at this point. And if that trajectory continues, we could anticipate that each year we would continue to, need to find ways to trim back our budgets and stay consistent with that graphic that I showed you before representing the reductions over the last eight years. As I mentioned before, the last request to increase the levy was in the year 2005. And we have also in the board as well acquainted with our citizens Finance Advisory Council. They meet with our finance officials and three board members monthly to discuss the financial status of the school district, its needs, its future projections for enrollment and cash flows. And through a number of meetings and conversations that we've had, it was the recommendation of this CFAC, we call it our Citizens Finance Advisory Council, to provide long-term budget stability by renewing and increasing our operating levy to the state-authorized cap, which would bring us an additional four hundred seventy-five dollars per student per year. So, if you'll recall back on that previous graphic where I demonstrated that we're at about fifteen hundred dollars per pupil annually currently, that cap is about two thousand. So, clearly, if you add those two together, you get at that cap that the state has established. With the bond funding, as I indicated before in my preamble, we're continuing to have increases in our new residents, and our new residents bring children with them or have children once they've landed here within the footprint of our school district. And as I'd indicated before, we're just so pleased that our residents and those who are moving here are coming here in large part by word of mouth. Those who have encouraged them to take a close look at us when they're relocating or considering a cross-metro move of some type, they continue to come. And as a result of that, we've enjoyed increasing enrollment now for a number of years, which really is an enviable position for a school district to be in because it's a really, a good indicator, an excellent indicator of the quality of the programming and that families continue to feel as though they're getting a great product when they're sending their children to Wayzetta Public Schools. So, it really is a great source of pride for us. It does come with some challenges in the form of capacity and keeping up with this growth and the ongoing needs that we experience, and it's important for us to always try to stay out in front of this. I think I can say that our facility quality perhaps is as good right now as it's ever been because you've made a commitment over a number of years to ensure that we take good care of our existing facilities and to also carefully plan additional and new facilities, either in the form of additions to our schools or, in the case of Metal Ridge, a brand-new school. So, we really have high-quality facilities right now that function well and that have good ventilation systems and air quality, and we just really feel good about that. And then the other part of what we really need to accomplish is to accommodate this growth need within our community in the form of capacity and to take a look at some of the projects related to safety and academic needs within some of our school buildings. So, within the next few years, we're anticipating possibly as many as a thousand new students in grades K through twelve. That's based on housing development reports from our city governments, sharing with us what their anticipated rollout timelines are for new housing developments, and also working with a professional demographer in regard to what we might expect if X number of houses are built, how many children will that yield, and it's a little bit of an imperfect science and a little bit of guesswork, but in regard to the grade levels, et cetera, that will be moving into the school district. But we have a pretty good idea based on our past what this future projection and prediction might be, given that the current state of the economy and this trend of mobility and moving into the district continues. We can anticipate quite a number of additional students in the coming years. Many of those will be elementary-age students. To address this fact and to take a look at the data, we had a task force that met early this year, I believe approximately in the timeframe of January through maybe early March, to take a look at what the growth projections were saying and what we might anticipate in the coming years in regard to new residents moving in and how many students that might result in. After hearing all of this data and taking a look at the convincing facts, they concurred, this committee made the recommendation to you at an earlier work session, I think in March, but I can't remember for sure, March or April, but I think it was March, where they recommended a new elementary school with a qualifier of as soon as possible because the students are coming. And our elementaries, particularly those in the north, although it's not exclusive to those anymore, are feeling the crunch from the capacity concerns. So, that was vetted thoroughly by a committee of, I'll say approximately thirty, comprised of district staff and community residents that really took a close look at all of this information. And as I said before, they concurred and also believe that moving forward with another elementary school as soon as we possibly can would be wise. So, along with capacity needs, we have these three other, well, two other core topics related to the additional facility needs. One of them relates to safety and particularly coming in the form of traffic flow around some of our schools and pedestrian safety around some of our elementary schools and one of our middle schools particularly. You're aware that Central Middle School is positioned now to increase in enrollment much more significantly than East and West because we've channeled more of our feeder schools to Central. We did that by design because, as many would know, it's our former high school and has good capacity and had opportunities for us to expand in a way so as to be able to accept a larger number of students. So, the capacity, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's probably around fourteen or fifteen hundred at Central Middle School with perhaps a few more modifications in the future. But we're really in pretty good shape at our middle school and also at our high schools, high school right now because of recent changes that have occurred there. So, with that comes more traffic and more pedestrian traffic as well. So, around Central Middle School, to take a look at some of our access for pedestrians and buses and cars is really important. And then doing the same with some of our elementary schools. As you'd be aware, some of our elementary schools are placed upon somewhat of a tight lot, so there's a lot of traffic flow into and out of our schools in a relatively short period of time, twice a day at start time and end time. During the rest of the day, it's just fine because we don't have that much traffic during the course of the school day. But it really is important for us to take a look at that safety concept and along with capacity. And also what the academic component would be the third main focal area of our facility's recommendation to you tonight, is to essentially take a look at our media centers at our elementary schools that have not had a recent renovation or build of a new media center, which would essentially be Oakwood and Metal Ridge, which are both new construction media centers within the past few years. And also taking a look at ways that we can provide greater flexibility in our learning experience for students. And we found that both at Oakwood and Metal Ridge and those redesigned media centers, this opportunity for more flexible learning spaces and personalizing learning for our students has been enhanced along with taking into consideration the general classroom spaces and how we might respond in a way that will help ensure that those spaces continue to function well for us. And then there's currently also somewhat of an inequity between East and West Middle Schools and Central in regard to a performing arts venue. So, we'd like to also recommend that we find a way to enhance and improve the performance venue at both East and West Middle School to make it somewhat more comparable to Central Middle Schools. As I'd indicated before, as a former high school, it's often common to have an auditorium and a quite nice performing venue at middle schools that formerly were high schools, but that is not necessarily the case at middle schools that have always been middle schools. And we think that there are some ways to make some reasonable modifications and changes at East and West in order to improve the experience for our students participating in performing arts. So, that would be part of this package as well. And then with the technology levy, as I'd indicated, this is one of two, and this was last renewed in 2009. It will support, continue to support our MyWay program, which is our one-to-one mobile learning initiative. It will help us to update and maintain student and staff technology equipment and systems. It'll help us provide high-quality learning resources for use across all of our grade levels, pre-K through twelve, and provide world-class support and service to our students, parents, staff, and community stakeholders to ensure that our systems continue to function at their maximum capabilities and that we have reliable systems and are able to deliver our instruction in a way that we've designed and intend for it to be delivered to our students. In regard to the technology levy, it brings us about four million dollars per year for use to help us personalize learning and to access real-time educational resources through online internet access to learning resources that students would not have an opportunity to access without the equipment and the systems that we have in place. So, if this funding did not continue and were not in place, we would not be able to replace our aging equipment and to ensure that our software and hardware technologies are functioning well and able to deliver our program. And we'd also be unable to provide the level of technology support that our staff and students have come to rely on. It's a big part of this budget is for us to be able to ensure that we not only have those systems, but that they're working according to the way they're supposed to and that we can accomplish what we set out to do. So, with the tax impact with these three questions, and Jim may have some clarification or qualification on some of these, I'll do my best with it. But in, when you have an opportunity for questions and clarification by Jim, certainly he can share some additional on this if he would like. But with this question one, operating levy, as we'd indicated before, we'd be looking for an increase of about four hundred seventy-five dollars per student, and that will generate somewhere in the neighborhood of about four point nine-five or five million dollars per year. The monthly tax impact, and you'll notice the asterisk by the word "impact" and the definition below, that would be on an average-priced home within the footprint of our school district, which is determined to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The annual impact of that operating levy increase of four hundred seventy-five dollars additional per pupil would be about thirteen dollars and fifty cents per month. With the bond fund of approximately seventy million dollars, that would be for the new elementary school and the needs that go along with the construction of a new elementary school. Those improvements to safety in pedestrian and traffic flow around Central Middle School and some of our elementary schools and probably all of our buildings would gain some benefit from those funds in regard to this safety concept would be in the neighborhood of about six dollars and seventy-five cents additional tax impact on this average three hundred fifty thousand dollar home within the footprint of our school district per month. And then the technology level levy, since it's a strict renewal, would not have additional tax impact. The taxable amount on that levy would remain the same, and that, as you'll probably recall, is driven by the larger net tax capacity within the footprint of the school district. So, all properties, and as the property values rise, it has some impact on that amount that's generated for the school district as well. So, we're showing that as a zero or a no impact. It would be a straight renewal of what we're currently using. And then if all of the three funding requests were to pass, we would take a look at reprioritizing and positioning the overall net tax impact to our taxpayers, again, on the average-priced home of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, where the total impact per month would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about fourteen dollars and fifty cents to provide that level of general funding through the operating levy that would accomplish those goals that I outlined for you in the beginning of my presentation. It would continue with the technology levy at its current level and would also position us to accommodate our growing enrollment within the school district through the form of another elementary school and some improvements made to our other buildings. So, again, the total net tax impact per month on that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar average-valued home would be about fourteen dollars and fifty cents. The ballot questions that would, are proposed here for your decision here this evening or your action include, again, this operating levy, renew and increase. I think I've given adequate detail on all three of these in my presentation, so I won't go through all of that again. But the operating levy for renew and increase, the bond funding for the facility needs that I outlined, and the technology levy for renewal would be those three ballot questions that would be brought forward to the community on November 7th of 2017 with the goal of maintaining our academic excellence and accommodating our growing population. The timeline, just to kind of give you a bit of a feel for what this means on how it all rolls out, tonight, we're recommending that you take a vote on the referendum recommendation that we've brought forth as an administrative team and the accompanying ballot questions and direct the administration to submit the review and comment to the Minnesota Department of Education. And again, that relates to the bond levy. And essentially, our demonstration that, yes, we are indeed in incurring student enrollment growth and we do need additional facilities. And Jim may want to speak a little bit more about that process if there's anything that I failed to mention that would be important to inform you of tonight. And then between August and November, we'll be busy informing our residents of these funding requests and the ballot questions that are before them to ensure that they're well-informed so they can make the decision of their choice or the vote of their choice in November. And again, our goal will be to ensure that our community is well-versed on the need and the rationale and reasoning behind us asking them for moving forward with these changes or modifications to our school district funding mechanisms. And then November 7th will be the resident vote on these three school funding requests. So, it looks like I'm out of slides. I think that's the introductory information, and Jim and I will remain close by here to respond to any questions that you may have.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Anderson. So, at this point, if either of you are to put forth a recommendation, we can, as part of the discussion about that, we can ask our questions at that time procedurally unless Mr. Westrom, if you have anything to add kind of right out of the gate, you certainly feel free to do that now while we've got the slides up and everything.
Sure. Yep. So, actually, I'll propose a resolution to approve referendum recommendations, but I would just like to make a couple of quick comments. Just to reiterate that the planning for this, we've given very careful consideration. We have used the district administration to analyze the financial needs of the district as well as the capacity needs and the technology needs. We, you're probably aware, we have a facility committee of the board that meets on a monthly basis. We have a finance committee of the board that meets on a monthly basis in conjunction with our Citizens Finance Advisory Council. And then we have retained the services of financial advisors to determine the most effective way to approach our taxpayers and generate these resources. Just a reminder that we've exhausted all of the tools that are available to us as a school board for building additional facilities. You're probably aware that we did add some additional classrooms without, we were able to set aside resources to do that. At this point, anytime that you build a standalone building, typically you have to go to your voters and ask for their approval, and you also have to work with the Minnesota Department of Education's Commissioner of Education, who is responsible for making sure that school districts do not overbuild facilities on a statewide basis. So, with that, those are just a couple introductory remarks, and I think what I'll do is I'll just share with you the resolution that just share with you the resolution that we're requesting the board to give consideration to tonight. So the resolution is relating to revoking the existing operating referendum revenue authorization of the school district and approving a new authorization authorizing the issuance of school-building bonds, renewing the expiring capital project levy authorization for technology of the school district, and calling an election thereon. And per the superintendent's presentation, it is recommended that the school board approve placing three school funding requests on the November 7th, 2017 ballot, and the purpose of this funding is to maintain academic excellence for our growing student population. So specifically, question one will be to renew and increase our operating levy to stabilize the district budget, maintain class sizes, manage growing enrollment and provide students with needed support services. Just a reminder that the last time that we asked for approval of this operating referendum for operations was in 2009, and the last time we asked for an increase was in 2005. And then question two was to approve bond funding to address our growth and facility needs, including building a new elementary school and addressing additional capacity, safety and academic needs throughout the district. And then finally, question three is to renew our technology levy to maintain technology for students and staff, which provides a personalized education and access to real-time educational resources. So the certification of minutes of resolution relating to revoking the existing operating referendum revenue authorization of the school district and approving a new authorization authorizing the issuance of school-building bonds, renewing the expiring capital project levy authorization for technology of the school district, and calling an election thereon is attached in your board packet. And you probably recall that you spent a great deal of time at your work session last month going over this information as well. So the election is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, the 7th day of November 2017, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. And the attached resolution also contains a sample ballot and provides authority to set in motion the various activities required to hold the election on November 7th, 2017. So the recommended action is before you, and I'll let you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. So the recommended action is to adopt the resolution relating to revoking the existing operating referendum revenue authorization of the school district and approving a new authorization, so that's part one. Authorization, excuse me, authorizing the issuance of school-building bonds, which is part two, and renewing the expiring capital project levy authorization for technology of the school district, part three, and then calling for the election of those three items. So with that recommended action, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the resolution as presented and recommended by the administration and call for the election, and I waive the reading. I propose to waive the reading of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johansson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And this is, so now for discussion. Thank you, Dr. Anderson and Mr. Westrom for the presentation. This is an opportunity for the board to ask any questions, make any comments or otherwise about what you just saw. So I'll open it up. Yes, Ms. Johansson, please.
I have a couple of questions. I'll start with this one. So we did, in fact, hear from the task force at our work session. I think we heard from them here as well, and they told us to build an elementary as soon as possible, a new elementary as soon as possible. But did they also, because the other additional safety and capacity improvements also are a portion of the tax dollars, did the task force weigh in at all on those other lists of items that we want to include, and what did they say?
Thank you, Director Johansson and members of the board. Actually, the task force primarily looked at the capacity-related issues. We invited each of the city administrators to come out and share that information, but you're probably aware that in 2013, we called together an even larger task force. We called that task force, made up of many community members, the Facility Task Force. So many of the items related to safety and related to 20, beyond 21st century learning environments associated with our media centers, as well as the performing arts and the equitable programs that are offered between the districts, actually originated in 2013. And then Kristin Tollison, our Director of Administrative Services, shared some of those recommendations, as well as Scott McQueen from Wold Architects. So even though they didn't arrive at the conclusion or brainstorm those items, they concurred that those were very valuable needs to create equity throughout the districts.
Thanks. Yeah. Ms. Keen.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I was wondering if you could comment a little bit on a question that I've heard more than once out in the community, and it regards how the taxes are collected to pay for the new school. I've had a couple of people ask me, if all of these new students are in the northern part of the district where all the new homes are, is it possible to structure the tax collection so that they pay for the school for their kids? I know the answer, but you answer it so well.
Well, thank you, Director. Thank you, Director Keen and members of the school board. Actually, quite a few members in our community have suggested that we give consideration to that. However, in the state of Minnesota, the way that property taxes are spread among a taxing jurisdiction such as a county or a school district or a city takes into account the entire taxing jurisdiction and looks at the market value and the tax, net tax capacity of all properties. So we don't break it out by jurisdiction. That would require us to actually try to seek some legislative changes, and at this point, I think other districts and other people have wondered if that could occur, but at this point, it's not possible. So every property and every taxable property in the district would share in the cost of the three referendum questions that are proposed before you.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, Ms. Paulzine.
Okay. So thank you for the presentation and the explanations. I had a question regarding the graph that shows why is that a's operations levy kind of below the average? And I'm just curious if the two districts that are at a lower level currently, are they giving consideration to changing where they are? Are they feeling the need to kind of up what they collect to support what the state gives them? And then secondly, if we go to this recommended level, does that then make us an outlier or does that put us more in, you know, line with the other districts that are shown on the graph?
Thank you for the question, Director Paulzine and members of the board. Actually, what we did is we put together a list of neighboring districts or comparable districts to us and their current operating referendum authority. And once again, just a reminder that the cap is a statewide cap. It's based on 25% of the general education aid formula with some minor adjustments. And in meeting with our Citizens Finance Advisory Council on a monthly basis, we basically determined that we were going to stay within the amount of voter-approved authority until the time became necessary to renew that. So a couple of the districts, a number of the districts that are above us in the amount of voter-approved operating referendum authority actually went out at a time earlier than we are going out. We probably could have gone out to the voters and gone up to the cap sooner, but we wanted to stay within our means. We wanted to be prudent stewards of the public's money, and we wanted to avoid voter fatigue. So this is the logical time for us to go and renew the operating referendum that was last renewed in 2009, that is set to expire in 2019. And I am aware that at least one of the other districts that are below us actually are about to give consideration to renewing or renewing and increasing their referendum authority as well. If their referendum authority isn't renewed at this point, I believe that they'll go down to zero. So basically, they'll lose all authority unless they seek voter approval this fall. So it basically has to do with timing, but we believe that to provide fiscal stability and to continue to see those high levels of community support and community satisfaction, that we should actually give consideration not only to renewing the existing referendum authority, but providing fiscal stability for the next several years by increasing the authority to the cap. So thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Thank you for all the answers to your questions or to our questions. I have two questions on the monthly tax impact.
Okay.
The first is, just to clarify, the calculated tax impact is the maximum impact our homeowners would look at, at that $350,000 range? And is that assuming, then, if there's growth in the tax base, so all the new homes, they should see a decrease from that number? Is that correct?
Yes, Director Brown, members of the school board, the question has to do with the tax impact, the monthly tax impact on a $350,000 home. We have a pretty good idea of what our net tax capacity will be for next year, but thereafter, we are anticipating that our tax capacity and market value of the entire district will continue to grow. However, we do want to be conservative and we do want to give the, we want to be as transparent as possible with our publics. So the initial estimates of the monthly tax impact do reflect the most conservative or the most kind of worst-case scenario, if there's an appropriate way to say that. And as our tax base continues to grow, we believe that the individual tax impact on individual property owners will actually be less than that in the future. So, great observation.
And then if we can follow up with the second question on that piece. The $5.75 decrease, is there a timeframe that that will be a decrease impact, if you will, for the homeowners?
Sure. So as you have noticed, noted in your materials, as well as in our work session, we're always looking at ways to minimize any tax impact as much as possible with our voters. And so we believe that we can reduce the tax impact by lowering other capital levies or capital-related levies until such time that the property tax base grows to a point where it can absorb that and actually level it out. So basically, we've done that in the past. Anytime that we are giving consideration to requesting approval for a tax increase from our voters, our Citizens Finance Advisory Council and including the full board have always been very sensitive to maintaining a good level of support from our taxpayers and being transparent in tax impact.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Johansson.
So, so another question that I've heard in the community that I just am going to ask one more time, and we've asked you a lot, but I'm going to ask it again. This is a lot of growth at the elementary level, and we say that our capacity needs are pretty, the slide said that they're pretty much based at elementary. Do you, what is your level of confidence in that and do you, and that the growth is really based at the elementary and that we're not going to be worried about in a year or two that we're going to need more at the high school or the middle schools?
In response to that question, I would say that we're probably positioned, well, we are positioned better right now in middle school and high school than we are at elementary. A good number of our students that are new to the community are younger, pre-K or elementary-aged. And we do have more capacity at the middle schools currently because of the changes we made at Central Middle School. The board will be aware that we've relocated a number of adults out of that building that used to have offices there into leased facilities within the community, and that has created an opportunity for us to generate additional classrooms at Central Middle School to accommodate the middle school growth. And then with the high school, we currently have capacity of 3,900. We have about 3,400 students currently, so there's additional capacity there in the neighborhood of about 400 or 500 additional students. So we think that that capacity at both middle school and the high school is going to serve our needs well into the future. As I indicated before, enrollment growth is a bit of an imperfect science. It's difficult to completely project. A couple of numbers that come to mind is we currently have a bubble in our sixth and seventh grades where our enrollment is in excess of 900 students. So I think we have 920 students approximately in seventh grade and slightly over 900 in sixth grade going into seventh and seventh going into eighth. So that's kind of our bubble. Otherwise, district-wide, we're somewhere between 800 and 850 students. That will grow as time passes, but probably not to that same level. So if you project out with 900 students per grade level, all in four grade levels in the high school, you get to that 3,600 to 3,700 mark with still some capacity. We do have an option for the future to expand the high school to accommodate perhaps another 200 students. We explored that. Members of our current board, who were on the board at the time or involved on committees, might recall that we looked at an option that would have brought that capacity to 4,100. We settled on 3,900 with the knowledge of knowing that we could expand in the future if needed. So I think we have a pretty good confidence level. And if you reflect back on Mr. Westrom's earlier comment about the review and comment process and MDE's focus on ensuring school districts don't overbuild, you have to be able to present good rationale for what might be reasonably expected into the future in regard to enrollment growth and planned facilities accordingly. So I think we're doing that with this recommendation.
Thank you.
Yes, please, Ms. Paulzine.
I really don't have another question, but I did want to say thank you to the administration for going through this very exhaustive procedure in turning over every stone to find out the best way forward for our growing district. So I also want to thank especially our CFAC, because as you mentioned, we meet with them every month, and we have community members that share their expertise and their knowledge, and they give us a lot of great advice. So I really appreciate all of their work. John Deutsch and his whole team that has sort of put together and have analyzed which projects maybe can be braided with these new bond projects to save money in the long run and to take the deferred maintenance and realign it so that it works better and can save us money on those levies is just amazing. Our citizens' growth task force that spent a lot of their personal time to come up with these recommendations, I really appreciate that. Kristin Tollison and others who, you know, they constantly monitor our registrations and are building populations, and we just have so many people working together to come up with these recommendations. So I just, I'm amazed at everybody's hard work and Wold and Kraus-Anderson that help us work with the cities and the counties and all of these entities. We all have to come together and put this together. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and I apologize if I missed anybody, but we've all been working really hard on this for a very long time. And I just think that we've cross-referenced so much information and research that I really think this is a good way forward to serve our districts. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. Is there any other? All right. I have a question or two, so I was going to wait till the last. So, Mr. Westrom, you mentioned with respect to a couple of the other districts that, you know, essentially a failure to get a renewal on the, and I'm talking just about the operating levy. A failure to get a renewal on the operating levy essentially means that that authority goes from whatever it is to zero. And so my question, I guess, not to sound like a doomsday or anything like that, but if, without the funding that you're recommending us to put to the voters on the operating levy, without that funding, what happens, I guess?
Sure. Mr. Chair, members of the board, our referendum funds about $20 million of our operations in the school district, and as I mentioned, the last time the operating referendum was approved by the voters for a 10-year period was in 2009. So we believe that because we actually have a school board election coming up this fall in November, that it was prudent to actually renew the operating referendum at this point, renew the technology referendum at this point, and then seek voter approval and authority to build another elementary school because those needs have all been presented to us. We are renewing the operating referendum one year in advance, so we could technically come back to the voters a year from now, but we thought it was prudent to come to the voters at this point and present all three questions. So you're probably aware that school districts are very heavily dependent upon the state legislature, and we're thankful that the legislature did provide a 2% increase on the formal allowance for both the 17, 18 schools. increase on the formal allowance for both the seventeen, eighteen school year and the eighteen, nineteen school year. But as you're probably aware, we talk in great detail as we do our financial projections, and typically, the increased costs of providing transportation services, salary and benefits to our employees, and, um, also, um, supporting our increased enrollment growth typically means our expenses will grow about three percent. So, at least in the short term, we did a two-year and a five-year projection, as well as gone out further, and, uh, we're fairly, um, uh, certain that we would probably continue to see about a million dollars worth of a budget gap is what I would call it. So, we would either need to make budget modifications or budget cuts or, um, find another resource to make up that million-dollar budget gap. And through our, through our, um, surveys with our community, we know that ninety-four percent of our community, uh, feels that we're, um, providing an excellent or the appropriate type of education experience. The class sizes are appropriate, the configurations are appropriate. So, at this point, I guess what I, uh, maybe should just cut to the chase, we're looking probably at about a million-dollar budget deficit in each of the upcoming years, um, if this referendum, operating referendum wouldn't, um, be approved this fall, but we would have an opportunity to go to the voters one more time, uh, before we would see the entire twenty million dollars worth of local voter-approved operating revenue, um, become, um, expired.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I have one other question, and this is something that I should know, but I think it would maybe be important for our community to know. On the building bond, on the seventy million, uh, request, what's, what's roughly the breakdown new elementary, safety, academics, capacity? If you have that handy?
Um, yes, I do. Just have to pull it up quick. I'll just take a second. I will just make a couple of comments that, uh, you're probably aware that Meadow Ridge was originally built with capacity of six hundred and ninety students, and then we, um, wanted to actually have the ability to add on to that at some point in the future. So, um, the, the cost comparison is very similar when you consider that we originally, um, um, built Meadow Ridge with a base budget and then we added on to it. So, uh, but the information that you're seeking right now is the capacity-related, um, items of the seventy million are forty-seven point eight million dollars. The new ninth elementary school is thirty point two million plus the additional square footage that we added on to Meadow Ridge would be another five point six million, so it'd be thirty-five point eight million. The land for the elementary school would be approximately six million, and, uh, so the total would be forty-one point eight million, uh, the new elementary school. And then the central middle school capacity improvements that we talked about would be about six million. As far as safety goes, we're looking at Central Middle School's traffic flow and safety at about two point seven million, and then the elementary school safety improvements, that would be walking and parking lots and, and access for families and buses and parents, uh, that would be another six point six million. And then finally, our academics for the academic excellence, uh, would be fifteen point six million, and mainly, the main categories here are elementary media center improvements of about four point seven million, middle school media center improvements of four point nine million, and middle school performing arts space improvements of six million. So, the seventy million dollars, we do have that broken out, and I can, um, uh, provide that, and I'm sure we probably will be providing that on our website. And I would just like to mention that Jill Johnson and her team, um, identified the, um, improvements in academic excellence.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Any other questions or comments? I have one last comment, but it's not my own. Um, as you can see, uh, Dr. Cohen was not able to be here tonight, and although formally, procedurally cannot exercise a vote, she asked if I would share her statement with the board and the broader public, so I'm just going to read what I received from, uh, Dr. Cohen over the weekend. "I have carefully reviewed and strongly approved the referendum recommendation and the three ballot questions put forth by the administration. I believe all three areas of funding are vital to our goal of continuing academic excellence and personal well-being for all students." So, I thought it was important for all of you to hear, uh, Dr. Cohen's view and, uh, and to also share it more broadly. So, with that, if there are no other questions, we have a motion and a second, uh, and we will need to do a roll call vote, I believe. Correct?
Correct.
All right.
Everyone ready? Ms. Lucky?
Yes.
Ms. Paulzine?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen? Absent. Ms. Johansson?
Yes.
Chair McCullough?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Westrom and Dr. Anderson. I understand we have one, uh, remaining item, uh, or another resolution, so, Mr. Westrom, I'll turn that back to you.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, so what you've directed us to do now is to actually seek, um, approval from the Commissioner of Education, and you probably see that timeline in your, in your packet. That will involve the district administration in conjunction with its, um, uh, service providers, architects and engineers, financial advisors, and, uh, demographer to submit and make a case so that the Commissioner of Education concurs with the recommendation that you just approved. Um, the next item, though, is, um, a resolution for the Wayzetta School Board election. So, the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election. Filings for the November school board election begin on Tuesday, August first, two thousand seventeen, and close at five PM on Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Interested candidates may file at the District Administration Building, which is located at two-ten County Road one oh one north in Plymouth, Minnesota. It is necessary for the school district to hold its general election for the purpose of electing three school board members for terms of four years each. The clerk shall include on the ballot the names of the individuals who file affidavits of candidacy on said general election during the period for filing such affidavits, as though they had been included by name in the attached resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. So, the general election is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, the seventh day of November, two thousand seventeen, between the hours of seven AM and eight PM. The attached resolution also contains a sample ballot and provides authority to set in motion the various activities required to hold the November seventh, two thousand seventeen, school board election. So, the recommended action is before you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. So, uh, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election. Is there a motion?
I so move, and move that we waive the reading.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Keen. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right, and I believe we'll do a roll call vote for this as well.
Ms. Paulzine?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Keen? Yes. Ms. Cohen is absent. Ms. Johansson?
Yes.
Ms. Lucky?
Yes.
Chair McCullough?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Westrom and Dr. Anderson. Appreciate it. All right. Our remaining couple of items, we have, uh, board reports. Are there any board reports this evening? Any other board action? All right. Opportunity for the audience to address the board. Anybody? All right. With that, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Thank you very much. All right. All those in favor to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All right. The Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for July tenth, two thousand seventeen is adjourned.[1639.01]